I'll call a regular meeting of the Dallas Center Grimes School Board to order. Roll call, please, Ms. Wermuth.
Director Baker Curtis.
Here.
Director Dickinson.
Here.
Director Fiala.
Here.
Director Mollenberg. Director Carpenter.
Here.
Director McNace. Director Vandervelden.
Here.
I'll acknowledge a quorum. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I know we have one person registered, but I'm not seeing her in the crowd yet. Anyone else registered to speak?
No one else is registered.
Okay. We'll move along to item four, approval of agenda, looking for a motion.
Move to approve Baker Curtis.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Move along to item five, point and swear in the treasurer and secretary. Do we need a motion on this? No, okay. Recommend the appointment of Michelle Wermuth as board secretary and treasurer. Please stand and raise your right hand. Michelle Wermuth, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Iowa? And that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your ability, discharge the duties of the office of the Board Secretary Treasurer of the Dallas Center Grimes School, Community School District as now or hereafter required by law?
I will.
All right, I'm gonna back up to item three and welcome our visitors. As usual, I've just got a quick statement that I'll read and then we'll call our guests to the podium. We will now open the floor for public comment. I think we have one person on the docket tonight. I'd like to welcome you all to the board meeting and thank you for your willingness to speak to us. Per Board Policy 213, citizens wishing to address the board during public comment must notify the board secretary prior to the board meeting. Public comment is a time set aside for community input, but the board will not discuss or take any action on any matter during public comment. Please limit your comments to five minutes so we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion. When you do speak, we ask that you come up to the podium and speak into the microphones so we can hear you. Please begin by stating your name and city of residence. We would ask that when speakers are addressing us, that everyone will maintain professional decorum, listen and refrain from any disruption. Any person who creates a disruption may be asked to leave the meeting. I want to also remind all speakers that any comments that may be made during public comment are done at the risk of the person making the comment and that the district will not be responsible for any defamatory or potentially defamatory statements which may be made when you're called to speak. Thank you for your support of our school district and now we'll have Ms. Perez. You may now come to the podium if you'd like.
The older I get, the bigger the screen. Hi, my name's Denise Perez. I am a resident of Grimes and a parent of a 2025 graduate. First of all, good evening, members of the board and administrators. Firstly, I want to thank you for the work that you do for our students, teachers and community, especially during a time where the federal government is holding hostage funding previously approved by Congress. I've been actively involved with the district's administration since 2018 as a founding member of DCG Kid Safety and as a parent. I've volunteered, attended meetings, asked hard questions and, sorry, I've asked hard questions, I think everybody knows that, and tried to support the system because I believe in the promise of public education. My child has now graduated and I'll be honest, I'm relieved. I'm relieved because that means that they are no longer subject to the increasing dysfunction and inequity and erosion of values happening within public education. But I still worry for the children of my friends, my neighbors' kids, and so many others still here, and they deserve better than what they are currently being given. Despite the district's public statements about equity and inclusion, the lived reality for many students tells a different story. Students of color are disproportionately disciplined. Girls and LGBTQ students face harassment that too often goes unaddressed. Students from low-income families encounter invisible barriers to participation and access. Immigrant and multilingual students are marginalized instead of being embraced as part of a globally-minded district. And these failures are happening in the context of much larger, much more dangerous, excuse me, much more dangerous political climate. Let's be clear that Iowa's public schools are under attack. Legislators are deliberately withholding funding from public education while funneling taxpayer dollars into private, often religious institutions through school voucher schemes. Christian nationalism is influencing education policy, eroding church-state separation and marginalizing anyone who doesn't conform to a singular worldview. Most recently, the board is voting to remove gender identity from the district policy along with other protected classes once listed under anti-discrimination and anti-bullying language. We were told that the district can still protect all students while stripping those specific terms out. But let's be honest, when you stop naming the identities most often targeted by discrimination, you stop protecting them. Visibility in policy is not symbolic, it is a shield. Removing it sends a chilling message to LGBTQ students, students of color and others. You are no longer worth naming. So let me be absolutely clear in my call to action. Please retain gender identity and other protected classes in our district policies. Do not let political fear or legal posturing erase the very students who are most need our support. Following the law is not enough. You must lead with moral clarity and the courage to do what's right even when it's hard. I also want to point out some concerns that I know I have and have been shared by others in the community as perception is reality when decisions are made in the dark. In December of 2022, Dr. Bloom resigned as high school principal citing professional challenges and the toll the job was taking on his family and mental health. That's a decision that deserves empathy and understanding. And yet, four months later, in April of 2023, he was appointed interim superintendent, excuse me, following this board's abrupt, unexplained and fiscally irresponsible decision to remove Dr. Grimes at taxpayer expense. That kind of inconsistency undermines trust. Excuse me. It undermines trust, raises questions about judgment and ultimately reflects a board that is making short-sighted reactive decisions during a time that demands long-term vision and stability. That includes selecting, and let me be clear, sorry. The school board is responsible for oversight of the superintendent. That includes selecting, evaluating and holding them accountable, not hiding behind legal counsel or deflecting responsibility when consequences become uncomfortable. Meanwhile, our students are paying the price. To the board, you were elected to represent, oh, I'll finish up an email. Thank you.
All right, we'll move along to item six, approved minutes of the previous meeting. We've got the June 23 regular meeting and the June 24 board workshop, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Fiala.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Bils, looking for a motion?
Move to approve Baker Curtis.
Second, Fiala.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries, the consent agenda, looking for a motion.
Move to approve Vandervelden.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion?
Just a quick question. I see in here that there is something regarding an audit? Is this in this section? I'm sorry.
The agreement for Bergen KDV?
Yes, and I just had a quick question about what that audit was about.
Does the single audit as part of our fiscal audit, single audit looks specifically at federal funds? Because we got safety grant this year, we are going to be over the threshold of 750,000.
Okay, so because we got the safety grant, they're looking at our federal funding?
Anytime you get over 750,000 in federal funds, you're required to do a single audit and so that's an additional fee and an additional contract.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Just, I had never seen that before. So thank you for your thorough explanation as always.
You're very welcome. I'm glad you talked to me.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. All right, Jake Anderson and Alex Fallsgraf are here from the city of Grimes to talk to us a little bit about what's going on down at the city. So welcome you guys and thanks for coming to hang out with us for a little bit.
Yeah, board members, administration, thanks for having us tonight to give you a little bit of an update about what's happening with the city. I'm Jake Anderson, I'm the city manager. I get to do for the city council what Dr. Bloom does for the board here. I don't have a lot to say, I just kinda wanted to make some opening remarks and then I'll let Alex talk about the development activity in town. But mostly, I just want to express thanks and appreciation for the partnership. I'm regularly in touch with Dr. Bloom and the lines of communication there are good. So I appreciate that effort an awful lot. And I appreciate that city representatives, myself, Alex and Eric Johansson have been included in some of your facility planning. I just know from experience that those conversations and those coordinating efforts are super important between the city and the district. So thank you for those efforts and I guess with that, I'll turn it over to Alex to walk through a presentation and then we'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
That's not attached. Thank you. I appreciate Dr. Bloom inviting us tonight. I know this is probably long overdue, but as Jake said, the partnership and the relationship with the school district and Dr. Bloom really have improved over the past couple of years. So we're certainly happy to be here tonight to give you an update and would very happy to come back at any point in time that you have additional questions or would just like more regular updates. But just to kick it off a little bit, so I hold two roles at the city of Grimes, assistant city manager as well as development services director. So I oversee all planning, engineering and building services for the city. So quite a wide range there, as you can kinda see, there's a lot going on in Grimes. And really tonight, we're just giving you an update on some of those signature developments, key developments that are happening. What I wanted to first start out with was just a little overview of some of the annexations that have occurred. This is, annexation is the way the city seeks to incorporate more property from the county into the city. And we've been strategic in certain areas where we know that there's growth, where there's been utility provisions made. But as you can see here on the screen, just in the past two years, we've annexed well over a thousand acres of new property, all within the Dallas Center Grimes School District. The land uses within these thousand acres generally are residential, some neighborhood commercial, limited light industrial, those types of uses. Did want to give you just a little bit of an update on South James Street because I know that we have an increasingly large construction presence in front of South Prairie. The project is expanding the roadway from its current two-lane kind of ditch section to a three and five lane curb and gutter. I say three and five lane because there is a divide. So in front of South Prairie, it'll be a three-lane section, which essentially allows for north and south lanes with a center protected turn lane now. And then it's five-lane further to the south, once you get south of 11th Street roundabout. This is a part of a multi-phase project, improving James Street all the way from the intersection of East First or Highway 44 all the way to 37th Street. So it's a five or six-year project, $35 million. We're in phase one of five. So more to come on that and just kinda building off of the partnership. I know that Dr. Bloom just got back from a meeting with our staff just a little bit ago. So we're in constant communication with Dr. Bloom and the other kinda logistic team members within the school district, trying to prepare for when school opens back up in the fall. Highway 44 is just another one I wanted to touch base on because obviously it'll have an impact to the high school. We are currently working on conceptual designs for Highway 44 with our traffic consultant Snyder and Associates and working with the school district staff as well as your consultant team OPN on kinda the master planning efforts of the high school and how future roadway improvements to Highway 44 will interact and improve access and kinda the campus feeling here. It is a project that is still a few years out. We're working on, kinda said, that conceptual design. We've got some agreements that have to get put in place with the DOT, seek some funding. And then we anticipate it's a seven to 10-year construction project as you move through the whole corridor. So not necessarily that length in front of the high school, but over that entire three or four mile corridor. So this is a slide that I like to show that just really talks about the proposed residential growth that the city has experienced or has done entitlements or approvals on over the past five years. Since 2020, over 5,100 residential units have been proposed within the city of Grimes. Now, as you know, we do straddle two school districts, but 90% of those units have been authorized within the Dallas Center Grimes School District boundary. So only about 500 are within the Johnston School District to the very north and on the east side of Highway 141. And then you can kinda see the legend there just shows how many units have been rezoned, how many units have been planned, approved, how many have been platted and then how many are under construction. So of that 5,100, about 1,800 are under construction in some way. And that's multifamily, townhome, single-family, kinda the broad spectrum of residential housing units. This is just gonna move into the next five or six slides, just focusing on some kinda key developments. This is a development within the Hope District, which would be on the very north end of the Hy-Vee multiplex, sports athletic complex adjacent to Beaverbrook Boulevard. There are 80 townhomes and 320 apartment units. These would be kinda considered a more luxury unit. They are gated, they have amenities, underground parking. If you've been in that area, you'll see a majority of the townhome units are under construction. Apartments are anticipated to start here pretty soon. We anticipate this project will wrap up within the next 12 months. Harvest Point, this is 19th and South James. So this would be directly south of the South Sports Complex or the South Prairie Elementary Complex. This project and the very next one that I'll talk about, were part of a recent land transaction from a family that had about 500 acres within the city of Grimes along 19th Street. We've kind of referred to them as kind of a sleeping giant in the past. Have a large land holding, but not a lot of communication with the city. And then through the city's kinda strategic investment in infrastructure, sanitary sewer, water, roadway improvements, we saw the property owner kinda start to move their pieces. So Harvest Point, which is owned by Temple, and then the next one, Hubble Development, have acquired about 280 acres within the city and have already started construction on their development. So the Harvest Point, which is owned by Temple, has 870 units. Their first phase, which is 56 single-family lots, is under construction right now. And then there's a variety of other land uses within their overall development, which is about 120 acres. Founders Glen, which was the development I was just referring to previously, is a Hubble development. They have about 160 acres at Southwest 19th and Southwest County Line Road, 711 total units, 69 single-family lots in that first phase. I do expect that both of these developments will move pretty quickly. They've indicated to the city that they hope to be completed with their single-family development within three to four years. So between the two, I think there's close to 450 new single-family units that will come online in the coming years. Meadows, which you should all be familiar with, just south of here, the south of the district office and north of the Oakview Campus along 11th and Southwest County Line Road and then going all the way up to Highway 44 is a primarily residential development that's been under construction for the past couple of years. That phase one of the total 794 units. There's 69 single-family lots. You see homes being built right now. We're actively receiving more permits. Phase two, which is kinda hard to see unless you go over there, is the balance of the single-family. So that's another 195 single-family lots that will be online within probably the next 60 days. So we'd anticipate that there's fall construction happening within that second phase just shortly. Hope Horizon is a 240-acre development just north of the Dallas Center Grimes High School campus at the intersection Northwest Beaver Boulevard and Northwest County Line Road. Again, this is north of the high school campus, 1,224 units in total, principally single-family. There are some areas and opportunities for some medium density and some higher density. Large focus on parks and greenways in this area we have, which is kind of on the south-center portion of the development. You can kinda see a large park that's about 20 acres in size. We strategically put that against the high school campus with the hope that in the future with additional campus planning efforts, that there could be a really, really great project someday that blends the high school campus with a large municipal park and talking about sharing resources and really amenities and trying to capitalize on each other's investments. This is a project that we've worked with Dr. Bloom and his team on quite a bit, how those two properties could come together, roadway improvements, all of that, all those different components. And then the Southwest 19th Street Development, which is again along Southwest 19th and Southwest Jazzwood. This is an area that you saw earlier on the slide where we've recently annexed about 350 acres, primarily all single-family. There's a few medium-density areas, but principally single-family, 720 total units. We are working with property owners right now on the rezones. So we expect those to become public here pretty soon. And then all parties, which there are about four landowners within this 350 acres, have expressed interest in moving forward pretty quickly on their own developments. So we'd expect that we see permit activity here, probably within the next 18 to 24 months is what I'd anticipate. This is also an area, as you know, along Southwest 19th Street. Once you get past County Line Road, it turns back into a gravel section and then it's granular all the way up to the bus barn. The city of Grimes and city of Urbendale are partnering on the asphalt overlay of both of those stretches as well as the stretch from the intersection of 19th and County Line south to would be Waterford. So that stretch, I know that we've, at least I know the city of Grimes has heard complaints from parents of the district students that likely open and roll from Urbendale into Grimes and are utilizing that path coming north. So we've been working with Urbendale for a couple of years now on an agreement of sorts of how to get all of those roadways paved. So I think that will do a couple of things for us. It certainly gives us more ways in and out of the community, which is always good, but also kinda better, safer ways in and out of the schools in the immediate area. So we're excited about that. In addition, there's water main improvements that are going on in this area with the asphalt paving to help support that development. And then this is generally the path where our WRA sewer happened as well. So we have sewer, water, roads, all of the pieces of the pie to make a development happen. And then I'm just leaving you here, you know, planning is something that I take near and dear to heart. I'm a city planner by trade and was trained by the great Dr. Bloom back in high school in my government class, so kinda come full circle. So any issues with me, you can blame on him, but, I'm just kidding. But planning is something that we continue to do. Right now, the city of Grimes is working on a comprehensive plan. So the last time we did a full comp plan was in 2010. We did what I call kind of a soft update in 2018, 2019, which really just updated demographics, took a look at some of those vision statements, reaffirmed whether or not they're still good or bad. And then, as you know, since 2018, 2019, the city's really kinda boomed. We've seen close to a billion dollars in new development activity just in that five-year timeframe, which is a staggering amount. Probably about half of the city's valuation can be attributed in that last five or six years. So when you start getting into that tier of development and you start checking all the boxes in your old comp plan, it says go do a new comp plan. So we've worked with Confluence on that planning effort. We anticipate adopting it prior to the end of the calendar year. We've also started working on a retail market study. We know that there's a correlation between housing and retail. They both need each other. Folks that come to your community want retail, retail wants rooftops. So we've tried to take a strategic look at that retail market within the city, what opportunities exist. It'll help inform land use and our comprehensive planning and really be an economic development tool for our staff to help go out and get the best retail development that we can. And then that corresponds into the best residential development that we can get. That is what I have for you tonight, but I appreciate your time. Certainly happy to answer any questions and Jake can answer any that you have as well.
Does the board have questions?
Thank you. That was interesting.
Absolutely, yeah. Like I said, we're happy to come anytime, gave you the update. I know we've really appreciated Dr. Bloom and he's come to some of our city council meetings and provided some school district perspective on some developments. So we've appreciated that and extended the offer to come back anytime that you guys want us to.
Appreciate that, Alex. Maybe just one question, it's really around permits. You know, we've been tracking, you know, we always track permits and we track permit activities. So we've got a pretty good trended number on that for probably a decade or longer.
Yeah.
Probably up until 2021, we were seeing a number, you know, a lot larger than what we've seen after 2021. Can you just give us a little bit of intel around what's driving that? Was it just, there was plenty of capacity to build and things slowed down? Or was it really just a capacity issue?
Yeah.
We didn't have a lot of lots for sale and that was why we saw it slow down?
Absolutely. That's a great question. There's a lot of factors that play into it. The, in my opinion, number one driving factor is lot inventory. So what is available for the city to build? If you look historically from that 2016 to 2021 timeframe, the city was on average issuing anywhere from 180 to 220 single-family dwelling units. At that same time, the city was maintaining what I would average to be like a two to two and a half consumption to inventory balance. So meaning if we consume 200 homes, we need to have 500 in inventory in order to kind of keep that churn and keep that demand going. What had happened prior to that was you saw an influx of lots occur. So you saw Autumn Park come online, you saw the balance of Heritage come online. There was just a lot of development occurring in terms of like single-family lots and our inventory was hovering in that like six to 700 range, you know? And we'd consume 200 and then put 50 or 60 in and then we consume 200 and then we might not put any in. So over time, as you take three or four years of 200 homes being built and you're only sitting on 700 in inventory, we've just been playing catch-up. So we put lots on the market and then they get consumed. Put lots on the market and we get consumed. So that has been hurting us in the past couple of years. I think that there's a light at the end of the tunnel. As you can see, there's significant single-family inventory coming back online, which we just haven't experienced in, you know, the past three or four years. You might see a 40-acre track of ground go and you get, you know, two phases of 40 lots get put in and we churn through those pretty quickly. So seeing large-scale development return to Grimes, I think, is a good sign. And we're hearing a lot of interest. Anytime we talk to a builder, they say, when are lots back? Or when are you gonna have these available? Because there is that kinda pent-up demand, in our opinion. It's just, we need that inventory. I think there's also some other contributing factors that occurred 2020 and on. COVID had a big impact on residential development, really to a positive. You saw a lot happen because interest rates came down. But then as interest rates came back up, you saw kinda the typical development cycle flip, which means developers and contractors shift to, you know, types of development that don't require acquisition. So they may seek like rentals, like townhomes or apartments. So you just kinda see that kinda ebb and flow. So we saw a lot of construction in that multifamily and townhome market. A lot of our permanent numbers are coming from that. You'll start to see that slow down. That's based on early inventory again. There isn't a lot of available lots for that type of development and then the single families coming back. So yeah, there's just a lot of contributing factors, but I would say primarily it's related to the housing inventory, which we feel much more confident in now.
If I can build on that a little bit, I would say, I mean, don't discount some of the macroeconomic factors though. Either interest rates are certainly gonna have an impact on people's ability to pay monthly mortgage payments. But then I think there are some community politics at play as well. We have seen housing subdivision plans presented. The neighbors get upset about that because, you know, the realtor might have told them that that would always be a cornfield behind your house. And then when... And then when the neighborhood shows up angry, we listen to them. One thing that Dr. Bloom did that was extraordinarily helpful to us was to come to a council meeting and talk about the importance of continuing to issue permits and put, put homes and basements in the ground and build. Absent that perspective, what, what we hear as an organization from the public is that we don't want more growth. You know, we, so that's not the position of the city, but we hear that from the residents. And it makes it really difficult for our volunteer P and Z commission members and our volunteer elected officials to, you know, to, to make some sort of a decision that runs counter to that. So, so civic engagement is important. Dr. Bloom's participation in the, in the council meeting continues to pay dividends and as we remind people of those comments in successive meetings. So to Alex's point, a multitude of variables there, but don't discount macroeconomic things and, and the political process.
Appreciate that. It's good perspective. Maybe a bit of a selfish question. You know, I suppose these developments that you just showed us, and thanks for that. It's really helpful for us to understand what's coming. You know, probably homes, like first-time homebuyer or second home. That's probably, in our mind, the kind of development that really helps gross, you know, the school district. And so kind of selfishly, that's maybe the segment of what we're looking at that I think we're interested in. And not to say that those other properties don't have school-aged kids in them. I would just say probably to a lesser degree. Can, can you kind of just give us a perspective on a year, just maybe a year from now or eighteen months from now? How much of that kind of single-family home product is going to be or, or lots that would kind of support that kind of home? New, you know, first-time homebuyer or something that a young family may be interested in purchasing compared to where we're at today?
Absolutely. Yeah, I think you have a, a number of really good developments coming online that will meet those needs that you identified. The development directly to the east of us at Hope Timber. That was a development that Dr. Bloom came and spoke about to our city council. But it has a, kind of a unique concept where they are kind of townhome-style units, but detached. So they have that single-family look and feel. You don't share walls with anybody, but you might have like an HOA package of sorts. Those are all likely to enter the market in the like two seventy-five to four hundred range. So I think that's kind of meeting your, kind of crazy to think that that's your entry level and, and first home, first-time homebuyer, but that's really what it is. In a more traditional, single-family, both the, the Harvest Point and the Founder's Glen along Nineteenth Street, those initial phases are in, you know, we start to look at lot size, so in that sixty to sixty-five foot lot range, which is still going to be a seventy, eighty thousand dollar lot, five times home value. You're in that three fifty to four hundred pretty easily. If people aren't finishing basements, that type of thing, that's usually how folks can get into the market. Those are all going to come online in the next year. I would say the same thing in your Hope Meadows development. There's a, a pocket of sixty to sixty-five foot lots, about a hundred of them, that will certainly start to meet those, those needs as well. So, and that's not to say that those developments don't have larger lots as well. So you really have kind of a broad spectrum of, of single-family inventory coming online. But what I would expect to occur in the next twelve to eighteen months is going to be in that kind of first-time homebuyer, maybe your second home moving up type of environment.
Board have other questions?
Would there be any lower-income housing developments coming?
Below three hundred and fifty thousand for a first-time homeowner?
So housing affordability isn't something that the city can directly influence. Primarily because of the, the Fair Housing Act, that really everyone's kind of subject to dealing with. I would say in our, a lot of our developments, there are a variety of land uses. So we have townhomes, we have apartments. You know, whether or not they are provided a market rate or an affordable rate, again, isn't something that the city necessarily gets involved with. I do know that on the other side of one forty-one, across Beaver Brook and a north of Menards, there are some kind of what's called workforce housing, which is housing that's maybe not, uh, maybe not affordable in terms of receive like tax credits or any sort of like special financing, but they're constructed in a manner or maybe financed privately in a manner that allows them to meet certain income thresholds. So those have generally been in that eighty percent AMI, which is a pretty kind of average affordability rate for, for folks when they're doing development to try to get to. So those have occurred and then, but you know, in the traditional, single-family, housing affordability is just a, it's a tough, it's a, it's a tough conversation and topic just because there's so many variables that go into when you're building a single-family home. You have, you know, the lot and the infrastructure and then just the typical construction. So for it to meet a, an affordability metric defined by the state in a single-family setting is just really challenging.
Are there, thank you very much. That was very well handled. Thank you. With the City of Grimes, are there policies in place that work with like tiny homes? Or in Dallas Center, we're having conversations a lot about like mother-in-law suites. There is a word for this that our city manager is going to be. Thank you. Yep. Is that a thing that Grimes is entertaining or doing? Are there policies on the books?
Yeah, so I would say after this most recent legislative session, we don't have a choice. So the state mandated ADUs or accessory dwelling units or additional dwelling unit, kind of what you want to call it, for all single-family residences across the state of Iowa. So we are kind of in the process of working through what does the legislation mean? And what kind of rules can be put in place for the construction of those accessory dwelling units? We just tended some trainings on it just last week. So what we'll be working on through our comprehensive planning effort is how we can develop appropriate regulations true to the intent of that code that was put in place to allow for those types of units to be constructed in the city.
Wonderful. And one final question, because I am very partial to parks. And again, in Dallas Center, where we are talking about developments, there is a mandatory allotment of certain number of square footage of park or green space per acre of development. Is that something that Grimes also has in place?
Yes. Yep. So we have a, we call it Parkland Dedication Ordinance. It's based on the population generated by the development. So different units, generally based on our census standards, dictate certain population per unit. So just to give you an example, typically, single-family homes can have more people in it than an apartment will. So if you take that factor, population factor against the number of units, it's going to generate an acreage that's required. So in the City of Grimes, we require six and a half acres of parkland for every thousand people generated. So if you have two thousand people within the development, that could be, you have thirteen acres of park.
Fantastic. So we can be looking forward to more parks.
Yeah. Yeah. And then, and then we've been really kind of strategic on like where we locate those parks. Again, kind of pointing back to that, that Hope Horizon development, just with the balance of the school district property on the north end. You know, again, full disclosure, I don't know what you folks are going to do with it, but being able to put twenty, twenty-five acres of property directly adjacent to that. The model was the walkie-northwest campus where they have Triumph Park and then the kind of northern end of the northwest campus really has a really kind of great public amenity there. And I know both the city and school district were able to share on a lot of those infrastructure costs to help kind of bring down the cost of both of those developments for the taxpayer, which kind of both represent on different sides.
Yeah. Awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Could you pull up the high school? Could you go back to the high school?
This one, yep.
So we're talking that green here at the bottom, that's what's going to be north of the high school campus, correct? So then that road is kind of to the west. Is that the one we're talking about at some point? Would connect to an, an exit, okay. To another exit, okay. What's the brown, what's the stuff?
Absolutely. Yep. So the darkest brown would be a medium-density townhome. The lighter brown, so it would be kind of the one on this side, is multifamily. And then the variety of other colors with like the smaller lots is just different lot sizes of single-family. So that kind of gets to Mr. Carpenter's point about those variety of entry points for housing. So like purple, in this case, is like fifty-foot wide lots. Yellow is, I believe, fifty-five. Green is sixty. And then the orange is like your seventy-foot traditional.
I know from reading the newsletter and from participating in your survey and just the general information you all put out, that there is going to be a special census conducted in order to learn more about our specific population, the needs, future planning. I believe also what was stated in that update was something about the ability for the city to apply for grant funding and such. As we look to the future and we talk about green spaces and parks, the city has been very responsive and always taking feedback from the community and designing spaces that work for all of the people in our community. What sort of discussion is there about placing of perhaps some sort of an inclusive park in one of these developments?
Yeah, I don't know if we've had a detailed or pointed conversation about that. I know that we check some of those boxes just through our standard park development or even facility development, whether or not that's putting adult-sized changing tables in our public restrooms, which we've had at the splash pad, the Hy-Vee multiplex, the library. But also just in like, things like the surfacing of our playgrounds. So we're utilizing either a synthetic turf or a poured-in-place surfacing that does allow for those that are wheelchair-bound to kind of still enjoy the same amenities. But in addition to that, obviously, we're meeting all of the typical like ADA standards. So that's, you know, water bottle filling or drinking fountain heights, parking, that type of thing. So, so we, we try to deploy all of those in our parks and facilities where we can. But to the question about, is there a specific inclusive identified park that hasn't happened yet? Just because it hasn't happened yet. Not that we're not interested in that. It's just, we've been.
It was one of the survey questions. That's why I asked.
Yep, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other questions? Jake, Alex, appreciate you coming. So very informative. Let us, and always let the board know how we can support you all. You guys have done a great job supporting us. We appreciate your partnership very much.
Jake, this is probably more for you real quick. His presentation skills dramatically improved since his senior year. Oh, I mean, the guy was just a shaken mess.
He doesn't even remember.
Yeah, that was, I was super proud of that young whippersnapper up there. Thanks, children.
Great. OPM, so OPM's been working for the last several months to develop a, a ten-year master plan. And so we'll hear from them just kind of about those, those improvements.
There we go. Okay, maybe some introductions first. I'm Kristen Lewis. I'm managing principal in our Des Moines studio.
I'm Ken Hagan. I am the regional K-12 director for the Des Moines studio as well.
And then with us today, we've got Chad from DCI Group as well, who's been the construction manager. They're helping with construction costing and phasing and all those fun things. So they've been a part of this project as well, so.
A couple of people that aren't with us tonight, though. Roger Lesher from Modus. So if there's any specific mechanical questions, we might have to like take notes and ask him. And then James Rotemeyer from Bishop Engineering has been helping us as well for site development.
Awesome. So we wanted to just give you an overview of where we're at. We've spent, I think, the last seven months or so working through a facility master plan. We'll talk about what that process looked like. We'll talk about kind of what we did for condition assessments and educational assessments. We'll look at a big list of needs that we found for your buildings. And then we'll kind of talk about how all those things start to come together into concepts and timeline and those kinds of things, so. So what is a facility master plan? So a facility master plan is really, we think of it as a roadmap. It really helps give you some ideas on how and when you might be spending dollars on improvements to your facilities. These improvements could be small things like roof replacements, which are a part of the master plan. They can also be bigger things like new buildings or new construction. So it just helps kind of identify all the things that are needed. In this case, it's looking forward about seven years. We'll talk about that here in a little bit. But it should help give you some ideas on what to plan for in the future. So our planning process includes a lot of steps. We've met with a ton of people. Ken spent a lot of time in all of your facilities. We did the conditions assessments, which is really walking around everything, taking a look, poking at things, trying to see what, what condition everything is in. We met with all of the educators and did educational assessments with your building staff, like principals. And then we met with a facility advisory committee, which was a group of community and parents and some of you here in this room and got to have a chance to talk about priorities and where the needs are and confirm direction. And now we're kind of here today to show you what that all looks like and, and what the concepts are. Moving forward from today, you'll have to decide in the future if you want to choose to do a bond referendum, how we're going to support the funding of these projects. But tonight, we just want to give you a good overview of where we're at today. Oh, our slides keep kind of sliding around here.
We've got odd-sized slide apparently.
We must.
Yeah, I spent so much time in your facilities, oh, sorry, that Dr. Bloom and your facilities department stopped letting me in and just giving me a key card, access card, so I can just crawl around wherever I need to. It was really great to see kind of everything that you guys have put in place. We started with a lot of visual inspection, going around, looking at things, understanding what's happening at all your facilities, talking with your facilities department, talking with your administrators and your staff. Really wanted to review those things at a high level as well as looking at existing building drawings. So once we went out and looked at things visually, we went back and understood things on a drawing level to understand maybe some of the nuts and bolts of what were happening within each building. The high school was something that we really took a lot of time on. We reviewed every single room in the high school. We looked at everything. We, we really poked around that building from start to finish. The other schools were more of a, we would look at a, a type of classroom, right? Or high, different impact spaces, like the gymnasium or the cafeteria, the kitchen, to get a really good understanding of what's happening in each one of those schools. And that's really because we understood the high school to be the biggest need right out of the gate. But we wanted to verify that and really run that to ground. I have the clicker, don't I?
You do.
You have given it to me. All right. So this is just kind of a, a big, long list of like all the stuff that we found at the, the different facilities of just the, the physical pieces of, of infrastructure and of the building. But the big takeaway here is your, your facilities are really in good shape, especially your elementary schools. Very well taken care of. There's just some things that are coming to the end of the useful life in each one of these facilities. With the exception of the high school, there's some, and we'll get into this a little bit. There's some things that we found on the exterior wall systems that were not quite up to speed, that we would like to really remedy those as we move forward with projects. The next thing we did was look at an educational assessment process. This is where we would talk to your staff and administration to each one of the buildings to understand how the buildings were being used. We toured each one, looked at all the rooms, understood what was happening, how, how special education was being taught, where the buses came in, how many classrooms do you have, where's your pre-K? Like all of those kinds of questions we would run through. Are there, is there anything that's lacking in any of these that you would really want to see happen? Those are the kinds of things that we really dug into and understood how teaching was happening in each one of these buildings as well. So that's, that's something that we really dug into a lot. So again, creating a list of understanding what all those needs were. We also looked at capacity of each one of the, each one of the buildings. The one that really stuck out, obviously, and you can see here, is the high school. Doing a capacity analysis of that, you're sitting around just under a thousand kids. Right now, you house about a thousand seventy-three kids. So, and that was really reflected in when we talked to the, the administration there, understanding that they, they were. the administration there, understanding that they, they were packing thirty to thirty-two kids in classrooms. They were doing that kind of stuff. There were no empty classrooms. Um, teachers oftentimes had to share or will be sharing, I think, next year, classrooms. So, those are all the things that we started to suss out and understand, uh, those, those needs. Um, elementary schools, middle schools, all have pretty good capacity. As, you know, you, you'll see that as you go through. Um, there's even some empty classrooms in some of the elementary schools. So I think that there's plenty of, uh, room for growth in those. But the high school ended up being your biggest need, which was, um, kind of echoed in what we heard up front. So, just looking at, uh, a big picture of, we did, we can show you the calculus on this. Uh, we went through a number of different ways to, to calculate these numbers, but essentially what, um, what we were asked to do is look to see what it would take to have the high school capacity reach fifteen hundred students. Um, hearing what the, the s- city had to say about, you know, ru- new rooftops, things of that nature coming in, I think that this is a, a very fair, uh, number to try to hit. So what that looks like is, as we look at additional spaces, um, eight additional spaces in the classrooms, uh, and four additional CTE spaces. What we found as we walked through, um, career and technical education is really, um, i- is a big need at the high school. Um, the classrooms where you have a number of classrooms oftentimes are a little bit smaller than what we would like to see in a, in a standard high school classroom, and you have a lot of redundancy. And that is just based on you bringing together the high school and the, and the middle school. So you have two kitchens and two cafeterias, and, you know, you used to have two libraries. One of those is kind of switched over to something else now, but, um, all those things are just kind of adding to, um, the need to reorganize the building a little bit and understand how we might be able to make better use of some of those spaces. Um, and really try to find better utilization for your high school, uh, classrooms, which will help drive up those numbers, which is why you don't see a bigger number in the classroom need, uh, because we're planning on having a higher utilization. We can talk about that as we get into the, the high school project in and of itself. Um, I think that's it.
All right, so, um, thanks, Ken. That, that generated a whole long list of projects, and this is a summary of all of them. We won't go through line item by line item here, but once we complete the master plan, you guys can get copies of that, so you can kind of see and really dive into more detail. Um, generally, you can see as you visually look at this, the high school has kind of the most, the most needs in terms of, um, as Ken said, um, reorganizing the building so that it's not two buildings anymore. It's really functioning as one. Um, and then there are a number of projects, um, for the middle school and the elementary schools. Um, and this was really interesting to unpack with the facility advisory committee. Um, we reviewed all of these needs with them and then began to kind of think about prioritizing. So, um, as we met with the facility advisory committee, we presented all this information, and it's a lot to digest. So we asked, um, the group to, um, think about what was most important, and really, um, you know, using a variety of survey tools. Um, safety and security rose to the top, of course. You know, that's the number one priority for our facilities, is that they're safe and secure. And we know, um, based off of some of the li- the projects listed there, that we do have some needs. In your, um, high school doesn't have a secure entry, um, your middle school, um, needs a secure entry, and a couple of elementary school projects need secure entries. So those were things that rose to the top as needing to be addressed sooner than later. Um, and then, of course, the, the high school campus itself. And the last three bullet points here, high school campus, capacity and classroom space was really about the high school. Um, we went on a tour of the high school with the facility advisory committee. Um, so everybody could kind of see if they've never had a kid there or whatever. They could see what state the building is in. Um, and we could all kind of feel that it's tight. Um, the CTE area is really just a combined woods and metals lab. And if you go to some other districts around, um, the area, you'll find, um, those are separated spaces. Um, they have more project area. They're incorporating other kinds of maker spaces and other opportunities for education for students. Um, so that really kind of became into focus as an area of need, um, here in the future as we look at the high school. So, again, this is a list. So we take that list with the facility advisory committee, and we begin to prioritize it. And so in our phase one grouping of projects, we see a reimagination of the high school kind of come to the front, as well as middle school, uh, renovations, and then, um, Dallas Center Elementary, secure en- secure entry, as well as North Ridge secure entry, and then a little bit of work at Oak View with some athletics pieces to improve, um, those areas as well. And then phase two is, um, looking at South Prairie for mechanical, really kind of working on some of the mechanical replacements that need to happen in the next few years. Um, Heritage as well, and then looking at the District Operations Center. There's some needs there, um, for, for that area moving forward. Um, and then North Ridge Elementary kind of comes in a little bit later, and Ken will walk us through some of these in a little more detail, but, um, and then finally, phase four is, uh, some work at the high school. Um, as you grow your enrollment, you will need to have a larger stadium for spectators. Um, so down the road, you'll want to think about how do we increase our capacity at the stadium with some new bleachers, press box. Um, you know, just parking probably out there too. So we'll talk about that here in a minute. Um, so if we take all of those bundles and begin to kind of put them all together, you can start to see how this maps out, um, and on, in a timeline. Um, the blue projects are those first phase, which is the high school, Oak View, middle school, Dallas El- Dallas Center Elementary, and North Ridge. Um, that all is, uh, really, you're really looking at probably a three-to-four-year window to complete all of that work. Um, then as funding is available, you can begin to work on the next phase of projects, and it kind of all kind of staggers down from there. Um, and we think it's achievable to complete all this work in the next seven, seven to ten years. Looking at this kind of in just a more graphic way, um, again, you've got the seven-year kind of time horizon for your master plan. There were a couple of projects, larger projects, that came up during our facility advisory committee meetings. Um, and we have kind of plugged them into the future, because they, they came up, but they didn't arise, um, to the level of priority as these that are listed here. Those included, uh, new auditorium. Um, your auditorium seats, five, six hundred or so. Um, which is a little small for a large high school, uh, facility. Many are around that thousand-seat, um, number. So that might be something you consider in the future as you're growing the, the size of your enrollment. Um, we also know that, you know, somewhere down the road, there might be a new elementary school, and possibly an early childhood center as well, as a ways to kind of incorporate or grow your enrollment. So, these were things that kind of, they came up, they're important, you know, to keep on your radar in the future, but they're out, um, outside of the kind of window that we were looking at.
So the projects themselves, um, I'm sorry, I, I'm used to projecting, so standing next to a microphone is, is odd for me. So at Dallas Center Elementary, um, this was one of those that really I, uh, identified as needing a secured entry. Um, really, it's a matter of reorganizing the building a little bit. Um, we're going to bring the guidance that sits at the north su- or the, the entry, moving it to the back and moving what is the current administration area to the front, um, punching a hole through that existing, um, wall and creating a secure vestibule. Does everybody know what a secure vestibule is? Or is everybody familiar? Okay, great. I won't dive into the detail on that too much then. Um, there's some other things that are going to go along with that. Um, we've got some fire panel upgrades, and, um, we are including an inclusive playground in every elementary school that we touch. So each one of those has that included in, in the cost of, of what we're doing. At North Ridge, um, again, the secured entry. Um, we, we have to touch a little bit less of this building in order to make that secure entry kind of a reality. It's basically cutting a hole in your precast wall. We'll have to figure out where exactly that happens. Um, they're a little persnickety about just cutting holes in, in giant concrete walls, but we'll, we'll get through that. Um, there's some other things that, that are going to go along with that. At first, um, with the North Ridge project, with tuck, some tuck pointing and some re-roof, uh, window replacement, stuff like that. Um, again, inclusive playground. And then we have some larger mechanical system upgrades that we'll do there. There's some heat pumps that, that are going to be replaced, um, some building automation systems, things of that nature. That's just the extent of my mechanical knowledge, so if you ask me any other questions about mechanical, I'll just have to differ. So at the middle school, we start to get into some heavier kind of reorganization of the building. As we worked with, uh, the staff there, what we realized is, um, or as, as we talk to them, they like to teach in teams. So even number of classrooms is something that is really important there. Um, for whatever reason, two of your neighborhoods or two of your pods have odd number of classrooms, so then they have to go down to kind of that center. Does this thing work?
It doesn't work on the screen.
Uh, it doesn't work on the screen. Um, so they kind of have to go down to the center of the building, um, which isn't really conducive to collaborative work. So then, um, they have to send those kids up to the middle of the pod, and it kind of ends up being they lose line of sight and the kids wander and whatever, middle schoolers, right? Um, so trying to use some of the, this as an opportunity to, as we reorganize, uh, and move the administration utilizing that as a way to get a classroom into another pod, as well as moving the art room. And what this does is it moves that administration closer to the, the parent drop-off. Right now, the parent drop-off is kind of on the opposite side of the, uh, administra- where the administration sits, and there is no secure entry to that administration. So if they come in, they can kind of have free access to the entire building. We want to not do that anymore. So we're going to rearrange that, move the administration down to the south, uh, pave kind of that whole, uh, area where the, uh, where the parent drop-off is at, create a proper queue, uh, for that, so that way, all the kiddos kind of can access, uh, when they're getting dropped off. We aren't going to do anything with the bus drop-off. That will still happen on the west side of the school. Uh, but this does really start to hone in on making sure the logistics are, are proper at that middle school, and it really kind of funnels the kids. That was another thing we heard, like, when the, when school's out, kids just kind of scatter through there if they're not on a bus. Uh, that will have parents that sit in the, in the, um, in the, the neighborhoods and have their kids come out of the north side, the east side, the south side, kind of all over the place. So we want to kind of condense that and make uh, everybody have a, the same entry and exit. Um, we'll have, uh, multiple mechanical system upgrades here too, um, building envelope. This one has more, uh, tuck pointing that's needed. Uh, we're seeing some more, uh, maybe some water infiltration around there, uh, as well as, um, the gym renovation. During our, our time, we heard a lot about, um, the stage and, and needing some updates to that area as well, um, for some ADA, uh, upgrades in that area. So we'll take this opportunity to, to do that as well. So, as we get into the high school, we'll start with the site. Uh, the site logistics are a challenge here, um, as you guys kind of all know. Um, so there's going to be two states that you see in this, the, the site planning of this. One is before Mustang Road comes in on the west side, what do we do? Um, and then after Mustang Road comes in, what does that look like? Um, so as we get into this, you'll also see when Mustang Road comes in, that's when we would plan on upgrading the high school stadium. Because we don't want to bottleneck more people coming on the west side of the building, um, that you already have. I've been to games here. Um, and I know how, how it gets really crowded as you come through the west side of the building. But, um, so really what we're going to do is redo the kind of the logistics of the parking. Um, we're going to go to a head-in parking system versus kind of the one-way all over the place. Um, create a single kind of lane that goes around. You, you kind of have that now. Uh, but we want to make sure that we have more of a, a decision point, so that way people don't end up in front of this building as they're coming down the, the lane here. Um, we're also going to add some parking to the west side of the building, um, to help gain some more parking spaces along the west side, kind of where your art rooms are at i- in that area, as well as kind of wrapping around on the north side. Um, as we reorganize the high school, um, we'll have some opportunity to, uh, capture some of that space on the north side as well. Oh, sorry, one, one other note. Um, we are gaining parking spaces. We're going from eight twenty to a little over a thousand. So that is helpful as well. Um, so as we work into, so what you see on the west side is kind of the conceptual version of Mustang Road. We know that they're still working on a lot of this, but this gives us a pre- uh, uh, an idea of where to start on how, how those things start to work in. Um, again, uh, we'll, we'll have, um, head-in parking.
There's a roundabout, I don't know if you can see it. There's a roundabout here that kind of leads into Mustang Road.
Yep.
So you would no longer have your access directly off of the highway. You'd funnel off of Mustang Road and have kind of two points of entry and exit on Mustang Road, which will kind of help give you, plus with the roadways kind of continue to the north, it gives you two ways out. And right now, you just have the one. So it helps with some of that bottleneck issue.
Um, and then this is where we would, uh, suggest bringing in, uh, the new stadium piece to it. Uh, you can see the added parking kind of on the north side, uh, adjacent to the stadium as we rework the bleachers and everything else that go along with that. And again, we, we gain a little bit more parking at this location, at this juncture at, um, because we're gaining some of the parking on the north side at eleven sixty total. So the high school itself, um, don't give away our renderings, Agent. Come on, we want to save that. Uh, so the reorganization of the high school becomes something that, um, I, I remember walking into the, one of the meetings and having somebody say, I don't know how you guys are going to make this all feel like one campus. It's a mess right now. Like, I don't know how you're going to do that. Well, that's why you hire people like us, so that way we can really look at this and, and vision that for you and help you with that. Um, what we started to realize is the classroom, uh, the classroom neighborhoods in the older section of the school were problematic. As we toured, um, the east side where Meadows used to be, um, is something that's much more in tune to what we would see and we would design to nowadays in contemporary design. So bringing the current high school classrooms up to that level is what we were striving for in this. Um, so what you see are two additions on the north and the south side, kind of enclosing that and creating a courtyard. And when I say courtyard, it would be very low maintenance. We're not throwing some grass in there where you'd have to mow it. It is something more akin to the way that the, the Oak View Campus is utilizing theirs as far as the, uh, materials there. Not necessarily how they're utilizing them, but, um, how we would envision those. Um, along with that, um, kind of a complete renovation of the labs that sit down in the center of the building, to create more, uh, air, uh, more daylight that happens within there. Um, really starting to reorganize the building too, and getting rid of some of the redundancy that you have. Right now, you have two kitchens and two cafeterias. Um, where you see your old kitchen, where we have S, FCS up there, we would remove that kitchen, expand the current kitchen that was in Meadows, and also expand the cafeteria, taking up that courtyard that you have that sits in between the two um, cross corridor, uh, pieces that were put in. So we're creating a larger cafeteria space, and taking up the old library, making that your study hall space that would likely have, um, some pieces in there that have ultimate flexibility that would, uh, communicate with the cafeteria expansion. Um, along with that, um, removing or relocating the admin, uh, into one location, so that way everybody sits in the same place. Um, that was something that was really, um, desired by a lot of the staff there, to have all the administration in one place, creating more cohesion and more collaborative opportunity for them was something that was really important. And it also gives you an opportunity to have the main entry where everybody enters and exits the building, uh, during classroom time. Um, the library would be then resituated where your current administration area is, an addition put on there, uh, to create something that is more akin to what a, a fifteen-hundred-student, um, school would have. And then a complete renovation of the auditorium, uh, which would include AV and lighting. Um, along with that, um, kind of a complete finish upgrade in that location. Career and technical education also gets, um, a lot of redistribution and, um, addition there. So we would create a proper woods and metals lab, uh, within that space that would really, um, have a lot of safety built into that, a lot of, uh, space for, for kids to have projects and, and, uh, keep those in one place. Um, we would also include some of the other, um, career and technical education spaces, engineering, um, maker spaces, ag labs, things of that nature that would happen up there, as well as the new greenhouse, uh, would sit up there as well. Um, with the renovation of the locker room, um, the alternative high school piece would have to move. Uh, and that would all happen, um, in, when we were there, there were golf simulators. It sounds like that's a really contested space in the high school of like, who gets that space? So we're just going to give it to the alternative high school kiddos there. Uh, what that does is it gives them an opportunity to have their own space, um, their own entry and exit, and parking that's close to them as well. So they can, they can utilize that area for their own. Did I hit everything? I think I got everything. Oh, special education, I don't want to leave that out. Um, we're creating a new special education area. Right now, it kind of sits on either side of. Right now it kind of sits on either side of that main hallway. We're going to take that, um, put it into one space so that way we could have kind of an apartment style, um, piece to it, a, a living space, uh, that they can gain life skills, as well as a classroom, uh, an adaptive restroom, uh, which is really important for those, for that, for that particular piece. Um, and then when we remove that, we have an opportunity to create some teacher collaboration spaces, which is how we would gain, uh, utilization in our, in our high school classrooms. Um, by teachers not owning their space, um, it creates a, an easier way to schedule things. Um, so that way we're, we're scheduling more efficiently as we go through that process. Okay. So now, the renderings. This is the main entry. Um, as you look at the space, uh, at, at this particular location, we're trying to have some, um, muscle memory, right? You have the, the red, uh, the red piece here. Uh, we're creating that again, right? We're identifying entry by the logo, by the red, by, uh, the larger overhang. Um, and as we create a little bit more green space and activity, um, along the entry, uh, to really suggest this is where you come into the school. As we look at the classroom pod, um, creating, uh, that collaborative space that, um, was so desired by a lot of the staff that's here. Uh, having that, um, connection to nature. Um, this is something that is, uh, really, uh, really important for, uh, student outcomes and making sure that we get good collaborative space for all, all the kiddos there. Um, on either side would be the new classroom, uh, pieces that would align with what you currently have. About a nine hundred square foot classroom, give or take. So overall, this is kind of what the campus is reimagined to. You can see the auditorium off to the very left, um, with the library addition, um, kind of in the forefront. You can see the classroom addition on either side, creating that courtyard in the middle that, that students can utilize, um, and be protected while they're there. And then the new main entry, you can kind of see really off to the, the one side, uh, off into the distance. Um, one thing that isn't noted really is right down the middle, you can see that big, that taller space. Um, that's where we would pop up, uh, an area where the labs are at to give that natural light. Uh, even though we don't have natural or daylight or, uh, views out, um, we do have an opportunity to get some natural daylight into those spaces.
All right. So this is our last slide. Um, we wanted to just sort of give you the sum total, um, you know, for that first phase and second phase. Yeah, so I guess maybe now we could just open it up for questions and see what you guys want to learn more about. And again, we'll have the master plan wrapped up here in the next probably month or so.
Yeah.
Um, we'll have that finalized and be able to get that over to Dr. Bloom and, um, get that out to you guys too, so you can see that document.
Maybe just jump in with the high school. Um, well, first, thanks. I mean, this is really good stuff and I appreciate the seven and a half months that I know you've put a lot of hours into, to getting here, so good work. The, the high school, and you, you hit it really well. I mean, it's kind of Oakview and, and the, the old high school, they're, they don't look anything alike. They're rebutted, but there's a completely different finish palette and, um, finishes on the outside of both of them. Their windows are different. So can you just kind of talk about how you solve that, particularly that, that EFS problem that we've got on the high school? And then, you know, I suppose then you got this exterior finish palette on the me- Meadows that probably doesn't work either. So how do you get to something that looks more cohesive and it doesn't look like two schools that were built?
Sure, that's a good question. Yeah, the, um, I don't think we touched on it probably, but.
I can get into weeds on that.
So the high school during our facility condition assessment, we noted that the EFS is failing and the split face CMU, which is the lower material, is also spalling off and has, there's a lot of water infiltration into the wall there. Um, so our recommendation, what's included in our pricing here is to pull all of it off. So we're adding additions, you know, to some areas, which of course that'll take care of the issue on the exterior there. We'll peel that back and get that removed. And then in areas that are still to remain, we will pull it all off and replace it with, likely with brick is what we've included in our pricing. And, um, we'd like to take cues from Meadows because the palette's nice, it's got a soft feel. We can grab some of the, the brick colors or some of the metal panel colors from that building and begin to bring those around, um, the older parts of the high school and the new additions, so that it all feels more, um, cohesive. And on the interior, you know, something to that sort as well. Uh, that's a little easier because you can, you know, with paint and carpet, you can begin to pull things together a little more easily. It's a great question.
Can I just say thank you for, I know when we went through this, we had a couple of options. And while people liked them, we kind of went back and asked for something else and you guys came back with something that I'm really excited about. Um, so thank you for, for taking our input and, and making those changes, because I think it's, I, I like the third one. Um, I'm really excited for that. So thank you very much for doing that. Appreciate it.
Yeah, we like the third one too. We're excited by it.
Um, you said in your presentation that, um, at the schools that we touch, we will include an inclusive, inclusive playground.
Elementary schools.
The elementary, so what, but does that, because when you put information up, there were three schools that had them dictated.
Right.
But there are more than.
Right, because, uh, what we're showing you is phase one right now.
Okay.
So those will happen when we do like, I don't, like when we do work at South Prairie in phase two. Um, that's when we'll turn and, and look at the inclusive playground there and so on and so forth. As we get into some of the site pieces of those, we're trying to bundle projects that make sense, that you get the best economy of scales. And we work with these, yeah, I understand what that looks like. Um, so that's why you, you don't see them in phase one on some of them, because we're waiting to get, um, that exterior work happening. So then we'll bring those in at those other schools.
Obvious, and there would obviously be grain, grading and drainage issues that would have to be addressed. Like I know at North Ridge and at South Prairie, they have historically had issues with water on their facility. So I assume when that construction would take place, regardless the phase, it would also address some of the water collection issues that they have at those locations.
And we've got some parking and paving that's happening at some of the, like Heritage is, or not Heritage, um, North Ridge. Um, we have some parking and paving, uh, that will take care of some of that as well.
Okay.
Um, and as well as I think they've got some issues with the grease interceptor out there, uh, smell kind of coming through the rest of the building. We figured out, I think, why that's happening, so we're going to address that and, and some of that as well.
Because we're trading off, right, with watershed and as we increase our hard surfacing, we need to. And I saw in several of the sketches, there were designs to include, um, wetlands and water catchment systems to hopefully help mitigate some of the water issues we've had.
Yeah, and the high school I think is the biggest, um, catchment to that. Um, what we're, what we're representing right now is some underground attention, because we're taking up a lot of your area out here for parking.
Mm-hmm.
So with that, we're including that, the cost that we're showing here is including some of underground attention to really handle some of what, what the, what you're having out here. Details are still, um, we'll have to work those out as we get into the project in and of itself on, you know, where utilities cost and all that stuff. But as far as like the cost of it, we're capturing that and understanding that that's something that will, will happen during the project.
So we talked about elementary schools with the playgrounds. Are we looking to do anything for the middle school, not necessarily playground, but I know that they have recess out there now? Or is there anything added in that for the middle school?
Yeah, I'll work with OPN or operations on, um, yeah, pre-K six. So we want playgrounds, inclusive, all of that to be through sixth grade.
Correct, okay.
Yep.
And then the parking spaces, it showed like a thousand something and like eleven hundred. Is that like, you add those together, we're going to have like twenty one?
No, no, that's, uh, that's.
As I was like, that's a lot of spaces, I mean, that'd be great, but, okay. So it's like eleven hundred-ish, we're talking about once you get the, okay.
In its final form.
Got it, okay, thank you.
For the new stadium, is it, are we adding on to the existing or is that like?
You'll tear it down and put new. Yeah. Um, adding on to bleachers is really hard. And, and your press box is in pretty rough shape, so, um, bringing in a new press box and bringing in new bleacher systems on both, um, home and visitor's side. Um, along with that, in that first kind of phase, we're showing, um, the, uh, team room, locker room, um, as we, as we get into that. So that will already be in place when, um, the bleachers come in. So, uh, I guess we probably didn't really touch on that a whole lot, but that is something that we will do, uh, during that first phase of getting that construction happening out there.
Are those sized where we have to have an elevator to the press box, or did you keep it under?
Well, I think it's under five hundred square feet is what we have to have. So if you have to have one, you have to have one. If you guys want more than five hundred square feet, which most want more than that, um, we'll, we'll have to bring in an elevator for that.
You put two, uh, four hundred and ninety-nine square foot?
Yep, we can do that. But you can't split them, you can't have two four hundreds.
Home and away press boxes, yeah?
Yeah, you can't do that. It's, it's a collective total. I've already tried to play that game, it doesn't work.
Well, we've, we've got a, a more accommodating city partner than a lot of towns.
I mean, I can't hear that, like la 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 la.
Great. Any other questions?
Um, I, I'm sorry, just one more thing. And just, uh, for those of us who maybe don't live in the construction world, um, and have never experienced water damage, like in their home, the water that you spoke about that's between the facade and the brick at the high school is absolutely something that we have to address.
Yes.
And if we don't address it, very bad things will happen.
The facade of your building will fall off at some point.
And when you, I know not everybody has the opportunity to go to the facilities committee meetings, because we all have busy lives. When you did your facility, um, inspections, you happened to note that there was substantial damage.
Mm-hmm. It'll be in your, it'll be in the report. Um, substantial is probably not the right word, but it is, it is something that needs to be taken care of. Yeah, I think that is something that we have identified as like a concern that you should take care of that.
Very good.
And looking at the existing building drawings, I mean, I can talk to you afterwards if you'd like.
No, I just.
Get into how, how that works, but yes, it is something that has to be taken care of.
And we wouldn't want to like make the inside pretty and not fix that.
Right.
Very good. I just want to make sure that's on the record. Thank you.
Sorry, really quick, these funds that we're talking about here, because these are probably big numbers that people are seeing, is this part bond, part Pebble, part SAVE? I'm guessing this is a combination of everything, correct?
Great question. All of the above. Yep, so what OPNs and DCI done a heck of a job is you're seeing a list of projects over anywhere from next year to ten years, and we collectively will decide what goes in the November bond, which we think we have a pretty good account for. But then also what will be the staging in the timeline of using Pebble and SAVE dollars for various projects that, to be honest, we may want to move up because it can't get done in a bond for three or four years. Or, yep, because we're able to put it in a bond, SAVE, 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 and now we can go get something in year five, because we've been able to save that and now can do it. So it is a combination of all of them. And also probably a good time for us to share as soon, we're going to go knock on doors, because this is a big deal that, you know, I, I will say it a million times, your, your taxes could go up or down because of life, valuations, just different school stuff, city stuff, but this bond will not do that to you. Right, so like I, we're going to have to do a good job of seeing a big number and thinking, oh my gosh, did I just pay something different? My property taxes are X, Y, like, we'll, we'll help coach people on, no, we're talking very different buckets of money, very different ways of, of paying for things. Our, our teachers' salaries are not impacted by any of the, like, it's, it's something that's very much needed and, and this is a way that we can go about it and spread some things over time and, you know, still take care of our constituents and, and our families. So that's part of our homework is they're not, please don't think this just raised anything for you, it's just not the case.
I think maybe just an observation, and I think when we've done this in the past, it's been pretty focused on a particular facility. And so we've gone and done some conceptual design and raised the money and then gone and executed. I think you guys have done a really nice job looking across the district, understanding what kind of, um, demand we have just in terms of, um, uh, you know, cap, the capital renewal need, but then also doing net new work across the district, but then looking at phase one and two running concurrently, but then overlapping to some degree. That really helps us, because we can only influence so much of the high school at a time, because we still need to be able to conduct school and there's so much we can get done between, you know, whatever it is, the last day of May and the first, uh, or the twentieth day of August or something like that. So, uh, I think this really helps us get our head around, you know, kind of the, the spread, the impact, but then I think it also helps build that story around, doesn't matter where your kiddos at. You know, between optional kindergarten and twelve, it's, you know, you're, you're going to benefit from this thing certainly, you know, in the short term and then relatively quickly across nearly every school we have, so. I think that helps, um, sell the bond idea for sure.
Uh, I appreciate, and I think it's important to add too, as we do our homework with our families, like, this stuff is going to look really cool. The pictures are going to be pretty, the final product's going to be gorgeous, but these are needs. This isn't, this isn't a wish list. Like, we have got to have three more secure buildings, right? People can't, we, we've got to do that. Our, we're at ninety-nine point something percent capacity at our high school, right? Some of our growth has declined, but it, remember that's elementary. They're, the, the middle school up is still there, like, these things truly become necessities. They're going to look great, but we're, we're not trying to do these projects because we, we think it'll look cool. Like, these are absolute needs to help our kids, our staff and our families. You know, I mean, you've driven around that parking lot, dear God, like, just do the parking lot tomorrow and we'll vote yes. So it'll be fun on the next.
Like the renderings that we're showing are what it could look like. We have to go through the process with the stu, the school itself to understand what their needs are. So it could look a little different when we're done. But, um, we're designing a little bit in a vacuum here, which is fun, but it's, it, it may not, it may not look like that when we're all said and done. But we're going to try to keep true to what we have thus far, so.
And I want to share before you guys go, thanks for coming again. The OPN, DCI teams have been tremendous partners. They're so responsive, they've let all of these meetings get our feedback. They've dealt with me saying, well, but try this and what if that, and so they've been a lot of fun and hopefully this moves forward, we'll, we'll do some more neat things together, so.
We agree with that, yeah. It's been a lot of fun working with you guys. We look forward to next time.
Yeah, great.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Well, up Nick, you didn't even get one pre-con question, so you're out of here scot-free, good job. All right, we'll move on to reports. Uh, we don't have any, uh, written reports or building level reports typically in the month of, uh, July. So we'll move along to Dr. Corinso.
Well, good evening, everyone. Dr. Bloom, do you want to introduce our special guest at tonight's board meeting?
Yep, I'm excited. We, uh, you know, we've had a couple of folks start July one and so pumped that Allison got to hang out with us tonight. So she is here, can say hi, and I don't know if she's got to take off after this, but, um, Allison Finley is our new Director of Student Services. So she has been, shoot, hired, you know, a few months ago and doing two jobs at once at times, it feels like, but she's been awesome to have around. So just wanted to introduce, you know, our new Director of Student Service to the board, and you'll see a lot of Allison and, Allison, I think you'll like this crew as well, so welcome. We're pumped to have you.
Welcome to DCG.
Okay, well, yes, she's been, already hit the ground running, been a great member of our team, so thank you, Alan. Um, a couple of just updates. First off, um, our new teacher orientation is right around the corner now. It's hard to believe, I just can't believe every time I sit here and share this. So in your packet, you have a copy of just our new teacher orientation, uh, that was put together. Uh, Mrs. Olson, our Director of Teaching and Learning, has put that together. But I also want to shout out, I know, um, Jamie and Human Resources and Carrie. Uh, what you don't see on this schedule is that they also have three, um, what would be optional sessions ahead of this to come in and to get their computer, to get all set up. And that was a part of just feedback that they took from those participants in years past. So that is also in the days leading up to like July thirtieth, August sixth, and maybe right before. So, um, you know, please, uh, join us when you can for, I know, I think Miss Olson included some information in the packet about luncheons. That you're welcome to join if you can for the new teachers, it's always great to introduce them to you as board members. Um, all staff pre-service days is the next packet that you have, so we have two documents. One is the showing of the classified staff and one is the really all staff, although classified would be a little bit in that one. What you can see is, um, we have a full week, so five days before school starts, and we have that mix of building professional development, where buildings will get to lead with the content that they need. We also will have teacher work time in there. Um, we'll also have some very targeted professional development for some of our student services groups, which is important so that we can set them off on the right track and the right foot and, and make sure they have a goal. You'll see some curriculum meetings with interventionists in our career and technical. You'll see some curriculum meetings with interventionists in our career and technical education. And then Mrs. Olson will lead some teachers in some professional development around, um, English Language Arts and, and, and standards. Mr. Justman has put together for us classified staff schedules, so thank you for sharing that, Carrie. Um, we'll have everybody together at the all district in service, then we'll kinda split. Associates will also have, uh, plenty of time in their buildings to be able to, um, get trained alongside the principals, to talk about procedures and all of that. So I, I really wanna recognize, I mean, the district as a whole, and that involves all of the senior leadership and the principals. That is a commitment of time, and, um, while it, it will move very, very fast, I feel like we've, we've done a nice job of covering and preparing for all of those teacher groups that we've talked about. So questions about those two documents? Back to school days? All right. Um, next is state and federal reporting, so Ju- July is pretty quiet, um, but that doesn't mean things aren't happening behind the scenes. So as we said, um, we just do a final review at the end of June to make sure all of our reports in, inside, um, the Ed portal are complete. Um, we'll look at, I've done kind of a study of what are all the reports due here for July, August and September, so that we're planning ahead. Um, we've, I've done some tweaking of like a user guide that we're working to create, so people, um, you know, anytime we have add people into state reporting, they'll understand where to go for all the information. And then also, um, Carrie and Jamie, uh, his administrative assistant, will be working to prepare for fall beds, uh, which will hit in October, and that's the collection of information around staff. And we also have done, gotten our annual notifications prepared, um, and other, uh, notices for, for staff. First up in August, you'll hear me talk about graduate verification, so we'll make sure to verify with the state all kids who graduated, whether it was in May, it was they walked across, or earlier, but also maybe we've had some students over the summer that have earned some credits, so. And, uh, then we'll do some accounting for, for courses. And lastly, the big document is this, um, pretty large, hope I didn't print it out, but I did, um, our school improvement plan. This is, uh, as you know, we've kind of built into this over the past couple of months. So our school improvement planning started in late April, early, uh, May. Uh, our teachers have done an incredible job. We brought to you at the last board meeting our district goals. And so now what you're seeing is the production of each building's professional, or each building's annual goal for the year. And then as you move through the packet, it transitions into our professional development calendar. So you can see in there, this is our Wednesdays at a glance, which I think I've shared with you previously, or I hope I did. Um, if you'll notice on the far right, we have our classified staff as well. So which day, what are the days that they're getting trained throughout the year? And then lastly is, and I wanna stress those last documents, they look like this. This is just a roadmap. It is, it is not a formal document, but teams were asked to start to think about and plan out what will happen at each month with regards to professional development. Some took the liberties of putting every single thing that may happen over the course of the year. Others are more broad, just to know, hey, this is when we can per- prepare for professional development. Um, the high school one is blank, not because they didn't do it. Um, with their new changeover of leadership, we wanted to make sure, um, uh, Mr. Blackmore had the chance to be able to work with his teams. So there, now that their goals are set, which are in the packet, they're able to start putting together their roadmap. So hopefully, uh, it's both an accountability tool for buildings. It is, if something changes, hey, no problem, they can be flexible with their PD. Um, but I would tell you, just from this seat, I appreciate now more than ever understanding what they're working on as a building and what their goals are, so that as administrators at this level, we can support them. But I, I would, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize those building leadership teams that have put a lot of time in over the summer and maybe at the end of the school year. So, um, questions about the building goals that you see? Notice that they're all different. Some may have two building goals, and that's appropriate. That's based on their data and their needs and what they're focusing on. Some might have four that align with each of our four, uh, district goals. But even if they have two, or they have three, or they have four, they're still also working to support our district goals.
That's great, thank you.
I found this to be a really interesting, um, process to see from last year when we were starting all of this professional development to like where it is now. And this is something that's very new to me. I've never seen anything like this. And this just has to be like a huge lift, and I feel like everyone that has participated in this has done so much work, but like been excited about it. And that's really heartening to see, um, and not only the way of, of team building within their, their professional learning communities, but at the building and then also at the district. It's just, it's just been fascinating and amazing, so thank you.
Well, thank you, Meg, I appreciate that, and I accept that on behalf of all the individuals who created this. It is not a one person, um, that's all. What I think we've done is tried to honor, you know, we've involved them in crafting the district goals. And now we've involved their building teams, and every building has a different flavor and a different need, so I think that's reflected in here. I love the addition of our strategic plan. I don't, I don't know, I just, for one second, I would just say, I think it's the first time that I felt coherence, just even from my role, of knowing, hey, what every place is doing and how it builds from level to level. Um, they'll be responsible through PSYAC and other methods for reporting out their progress towards their building goals. We'll come back, but I, I think we're seeing, uh, really good improvements in both the teaching and the learning side. Our teachers often say, hey, I just wanna know where we're going. They can, they can understand, and they've been supportive, so hopefully this is clear to them and that they've had a voice in it. So thank you. Appreciate it.
I think it speaks volumes about the culture that, that exists here, and, and let's just, it's really cool. Well done, Greg and team.
Thank you very much, we appreciate that.
Anything else for Greg?
Ditto.
Dr. Bloom?
Ditto for me too, Greg.
Thank you, sir.
All right, uh, thank you, team. Nine building permits, one single-family in Dallas Center, and then three single-family permits in Grimes, and five townhome permits. So that's nine, and we'll take them, and again, thankful for the City of Grimes coming tonight. Couple of months ago, we had Dallas Center, and hopefully, uh, both are up to, up to par, getting some more houses and townhomes and apartments, love it. So exciting stuff. My facilities update's again to thank OPN for their hard work in DCI, and thankful for the, uh, facilities team. We will meet tomorrow as a facilities team, if anyone's interested, because at that time, we will kind of talk about really some of the big picture things that will make it into the bond, um, and really talk about next steps with that. We will need, uh, approximate number, about six hundred signatures to get the bond to even come to you all, and on the twenty-fifth of August, to approve that it can be a, uh, you know, an item at the November election. So that team, because I can't go knock on doors and our team can't say, please, vote yes, and here's all the reasons why, we can give lots of good information. But, um, our facilities team and hopefully their, their friends will actually be on the ground, you know, knocking on doors in Dallas Center and in Grimes, getting signatures, telling them the, the reasons why we need this and do all that. So we'll kind of tackle that next step starting tomorrow, and then on the twenty-fifth of August, come to you hopefully for approval of putting the bond language on the ballot in November, and then it's, hopefully, uh, show all the reasons why we need it. Um, the other shout-out I wanna give is to, uh, Sean and Travis. Um, they just, there's a lot going on this summer, even though we don't have big building projects, that's actually a good thing, because they have just knocked out a bunch of stuff, and I wanna give tons of credit to the operations team, to the custodial team, Jeff in transportation. Um, I had a principal, um, call me today, simply to say, in, in her years in the district, she's never seen this much stuff get done over the summer in her building and beyond. So that's a credit to, um, those folks that are in those buildings every day, keeping it clean, reorganizing classrooms, and then just knocking out a bunch of projects. So, uh, just thanks, thanks to the facilities team and all the hard work that happens over the summer. And then just a quick update on enrollment. We're gonna find all the positives we can. So our resident student enrollment went up about fourteen, so still down, right, from October first of last year, but it, it went up, and, and so hopefully, August sometimes brings us a few more. So that's a positive, and also wanna, wanna share, we're, we're up, um, thirty-ish or so at this time. And again, we're using last week's numbers, um, so stuff can change, but we're up about thirty open enrolled students as well. So we, we've had an increase there, um, from, from our last, uh, couple years. So that's, that's a good thing. So there's kind of your hard numbers as of the seventeenth. So we'll, uh, at our August twelfth meeting, we'll have a, hopefully some even updates from there. So got Allison on my notes there, but we knocked that out, so yay, welcome Allison again. So, um, with that, I think that's my short and sweet. Any questions I can answer?
So overall, we're still down forty-three?
Yes.
I just-
Yep, exactly. Yep, thank you.
I just wanna make sure, thank you.
Yep.
All right, Ms. Wermuth.
Uh, at the beginning of the fiscal year, I always do a levy review so that you are aware of the different levies in place, um, that the taxpayers are contributing to. Our overall levy rate for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is eighteen dollars and fifteen cents. That is comprised of, um, the general fund at a total of nine hun- nine dollars and eighty-six cents per thousand, um, which includes the instructional support levy at a dollar eight and eight dollars and seventy-eight cents in the, uh, support of the combined district cost at the general fund. Beyond that, the management fund, uh, is two dollars and fifty-eight cents. Remember, management covers insurance, early retirement, unemployment, equipment breakdown, and this year, uh, the pooling cost for natural gas. Also, uh, the four dollars and five cents on various bonds that are listed here with their retirement dates listed. So we are paying a pre-levy of two point five million dollars, which will, uh, reduce the cost or, or the time length of that Heritage Elementary Bond, which is scheduled for thirty-four, thirty-five, and will likely end earlier than that. So it's prudent action the board takes to pay off some of that debt early as it has ability to do so. Should there be a bond issue in November, um, that pre-levy would go away and that funding would go towards payment of principal and interest of those new bonds, noting that that four dollar and five cent would not increase. That would be the same level, uh, should it, uh, move forward and pass, uh, an additional bond for the district. And finally, voted Pebble. As you remember, in March this year, our voted Pebble was renewed. We have a total of one dollar and sixty-seven cents for the board-approved Pebble and voter-approved Pebble that supports, um, several repair and maintenance busing, or bus purchases, uh, technology purchases across the district for facility improvements. Do you have any questions about the levies that are in place for our district? That's all I have for you tonight.
Thank you. All right, we'll move along then to old business. We've got the second reading of, uh, a variety of policies here, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Second, Biella.
Any discussion?
I know that we heard, um, Denise speak to the legality regarding the removal of protected classes from our district policy and how, um, that isn't necessarily written into the legislation, but, um, is clearly a move that we have been advised to make. I'm just curious if we could have a little bit of clarification on that.
Absolutely, yep, thanks, Meg, for the question. So, um, I appreciate Denise very much, and we know there's, there's others that probably have the same sentiment and, and feelings towards. So hopefully I can share a little bit about, well, we've worked hard the last couple of years, right? Starting with our legal guidance, is really try to, to stay in line with them as much as possible. One of my, I think favorite things about working with, with Allers is, you know, they're not coming from a place of emotion with guidance, they're not coming from a political windfall. They're really after taking care of the school district, right? And, and they would specifically say the, the school board. Their, their goal, right, is to quote-unquote, "limit risk" for you all as school board members and, and us as a district. So, that being said, um, part of the legal guidance from our attorneys as related to this specific policy i- is a couple of things if I could share. One is, as a general rule of thumb, speaking a little bit for, for Allers and their guidances, you know, um, it, it's, it's probably not prudent of a school district to add liability. In this case, if you are adding, um, a protected class into a, a state law that, that does not recognize that, and again, I'm, I'm giving you shared information, this is not Scott Bloom's feelings about what's a protected class, that it would not be good practice for the school district to add liability. And that goes in with, with maybe kind of the second item was, if it's not protected, our, our legal guidance, and, and remember, this is the same group that represents a lot of school districts. They are giving the same information out to others, is you as a board are gonna have a really, really tough time and probably an inappropriate time trying to pick and choose what becomes a protected class. So if you have gender identity and a, and a student or family comes and says, we wanna be a protected class because we are X, i- it's gonna be tough for the board to say, no, we're not gonna protect that class, but this class. And each time you say yes, you are increasing your liability. Okay, so again, they, they are coming clearly from a liability, um, standpoint. Also, I wanted, like, this is where I think some trust of our community members, um, probably come into play. Our team hears me say this all the time, two things can be true at once. We can absolutely follow the laws, deal with what was removed, and still one hundred percent take care of and protect our kids. Our bullying and harassment stuff didn't change. In fact, remember, state law removed all of those classes from bullying and harassment laws. So, so gone are the days of, I was bullied and harassed by race, sexual orientation, gen- et cetera. Now it's, I was bullied and harassed, and like, we just do what we need to do as educators to take, take care of those students. So my, my quick summary, Megan, team, is Allers is telling us very clearly, you're still protecting these kids, you have an obligation to protect all students. Do that. But from a liability standpoint, adding language into a policy that is not protected by a state law just is something that gets, uh, maybe a little scary when you're just strictly talking school board, um, you know, liability issues and picking and choosing classes. And if I could end with and then a- answer any more of your questions. I, I love Denise to pieces, and I'm gonna, hopefully, I need to be very careful I don't misquote this, but I had a little bit of respectful disagreement when she said something to the effect earlier this, today, by removing gender identity, that means these students will be ignored. There, there is something along those lines, and I just wholeheartedly disagree. I know these bus drivers, these associates, these principals, these teachers, the folks here, like, no one's getting ignored. Like, it, all students are gonna be loved and cared for by our credible staff. And when it, kids step out of bounds, we better hope, coach them up, teach them up, hold them accountable, et cetera. The, this state law is not going to impact the way we do business every single day. It may impact a policy. It will not have any detriment, because I know the people that are gonna make sure that regardless of your race, gender identity, male, female, you name the hundred others, you're gonna wanna come to DCG and be loved and cared for. So that's just, and again, I, I know that's a trust and kinda sappy, but that's what we're gonna do. So, Meg, I hope that, that answers a little bit of the, the legal advice of why they would say, don't add liability, so.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
So, I understand the advisement to have similar verbiage as what would be recommended from IASB-
Right.
From... So I, I now kind of, I wanna be cautious. But could you tell or speak to then, um, you said there will be no more bullying, um, due to race, or no more bullying reported due to disability? But yet, I would think as a practice and as a system, knowing where and the type of bullying that's occurring is an important thing for us to monitor.
Yep.
So we can be responsive as a system. And I, I know my role is to steer and not row. And so I don't want to dictate what that looks like. But what sort of discussions then are we having as a system on how we are going to track and, and provide that information to our community
Sure.
to ensure that we are still protecting the students in our population who do experience that, um, because they're- because there are many things that are being removed, religion, um,
Right.
age.
Yep.
Right? National origin, and I think we want, as you said, um, for students to feel welcome
Yep.
in our school community.
Great question, and, and I hope I, if I understand you, Nancy, so what I think the, the optimist in me is, right now, let's do it, let's do a formal bullying complaint. So a, a parent or student fills out the, a complaint, goes to Greg, Gail, principal, they, they kind of do the investigation. Right now, uh, previously, to have part of the, the checkbox is for a founded cases, it would need to meet one of those categories. Were you bullied and harassed repeatedly because of your gender identity, because of your age, et cetera? Kind of those rules went away, which potentially, I would argue, maybe helps, right? That there isn't this criteria, so to speak, of this category is happening. No, are you being repeatedly bullied and harassed, creating an unsafe environment? The, the categories almost don't matter, which I'm going to s- I'm going to say is a positive thing. That being said, I'm sure people will fill out, we, we encourage them to fill out these, these forms, and they're going to state why, right? I was bullied and harassed by X person, and this is what happened. This was the language used, this was the treatment used. So we're, we can still track that, right? It's not going to be like, someone's still going to say their reasons why and will have that information. They just don't have to have that criteria met for bullying and harassment, and when Greg goes to the state reporting, I'm just assuming the state's then not going to say, okay, DCG, you had how many reported cases, how many were founded, and check these boxes, how many were race-related? How many? Th- there's just not going to be that piece. I, I, I still envision the, the Greg and Bloom internal piece of, this is how many we got, this was founded, and, and here's kind of why. That, that is why I say our day-to-day is not changing. That is, that is still a practice we will continue.
And I would, I would just add, he was, yeah, right on, uh, yes. So by removing each of those, uh, indicators, i- it generally just broadens it, right? So it's repeated and targeted. And then, you know, we know that bullying makes it, um, a per- hostile environment and so on. So we're going to continue to investigate every case. Could a student be bullied or harassed based on any one of those factors? Um, yes, that could still happen. Uh, we, what I really want to say is, we're still going to get around. We have, we're going to go out and present to coaches, right, during like back-to-school week. We have signed up and asked every building to do a sign-up. Um, we're going to talk to students, uh, we're looking at having a student-led group. So I don't, I don't think that takes away nothing about these changes, while I understand the nature and people's comments and feelings. Uh, it's not going to take away from the fact that we will still, um, vehemently pursue those cases as they come in. Um, we can keep all that data, because we'll have all of the interviews and all of the information. It's just on the bottom line with the state report, I would suspect is where, as we've had to identify each of those indicators, we wouldn't. I'm guessing that won't be a part of state reporting, but everything about bullying and harassment reporting will still be kept in great detail.
And I, I want to compliment, um, the district, they've done a lot to be responsive to bullying. Uh, I think the addition of the independent investigator has been a wise choice, as well as the online form, um, to really put the power in the hands of the people that are impacted. I would also just really like to encourage us as a board to keep tabs on those categories um, and to not turn a blind eye. Because while our state may have elected to remove those things, I do know that there were a number of legislators that were very concerned about the removal of this language.
Yep.
Um, and we do not live in a place that is void of racism or ableism or s- antisemitism. And we have a responsibility to be informed when that's happening
Yep.
and to be proactive instead of retroactive. And so I would just like to continue that conversation and would like to figure out a plan for having those same sorts of grade updates that you've been providing us in the past about situations and circumstances, whether it's in a public meeting or because of the nature of the data
Yep.
a closed work meeting.
Sure.
I just, I think that it's very important that we have tangible actions that show that while we're working to comply and to minimize district liability, we are still very faithfully supporting all of the students that attend our schools.
And I appreciate those comments so much, and we have an ethical obligation to use that data that we gather locally, state reporting-wise, to then look at trends and patterns and to decide, hey, when we, we, we can look at any one of our buildings, I have it already in a Google form, I, you know, I could certainly share out how, what that looks like, or the factors that I collect. Hey, we're looking at fifteen of these incidences are happening in a classroom, in a hallway, at lunch, cyberbullying, any of those forms, and if we aren't acting on that data, then we're doing something very wrong. And we have so far acted on that, and I understand that sometimes it appears by a student basis, right? That student has bullied, and so we think of it as that one, but we have an obligation to educate. So you've summarized it very, very well, but also know that we have a commit from, commitment from us and from Gail, who holds us accountable in following up, you know, to make sure that we're, we're using that data to improve our practices.
Yep.
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yep.
Any other discussion? I'll move slow to vote. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Move along to new business. Uh, first reading of policies, it's a mix of six and seven hundred serious policies, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item B, call for the twenty, twenty-five legislative action priorities.
Yeah, sorry, Rand.
Additional information on that, sorry.
This, nope, sorry, this is one we, we put in, you know, Thursday, hoping we'd have it ready. We need to punt this, please, to the, the, the twelfth, we just don't have all of the, the data in on what are the top priorities yet, so we did not get that all added up yet today, so if this is something I can please move to next time.
Yeah, we'll just look for a motion to table.
Move to table, Dickinson.
Second, Baker Curtis.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item C, the strategic plan, so this is the final DCG roadmap that we all had, um, uh, a great working session on back in, uh, the month of June, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Viella.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, the conflict waiver, conflict waiver request, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Dickinson.
Second, Viella.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Item E is the before and after school care, uh, rental contracts, uh, for, I believe we have one for all of the elementary schools again this year. Looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Baker Curtis.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Uh, the financial statements for this month, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Vanderweil then.
Second, Viella.
Any discussion?
Thanks for all your work, Michelle.
Yes, thank you.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Got some stuff we're going to sell on gov deals, looking for a motion.
Move to approve, Baker Curtis.
Second, Dickinson.
Any discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Hopper.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. The next regular meeting will be, uh, Monday, August the twenty-fifth. Looking for a motion to adjourn.
Hold on, that's going to be like right after my birthday, so I expect.
It's on the first day of school. I don't want to hear it, Dickinson.
Move to adjourn. Second, Dickinson.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign, or adjourned.